Trish L. Gleason, Assistant City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, August 1st, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting work sessions on workforce housing needs and historic building rehabilitation and preservation.
Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for August 1st, 2022. As a reminder to our in-person and online viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Council's member Barber?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Resnick?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Sprank?
Here.
Wethel?
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan?
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell?
Here.
The next work session is Historic Building Rehabilitation and Preservation.
Thank you, Trish. Go ahead, Alexis. Yeah, thank you.
All right, Alexis Steiger. Hang on. A little better. Alexis Steiger, Housing and Community Development Director. So, the City Council has as a top priority focus on historic building preservation and rehabilitation, and what that looks like in the city of Dubuque currently, and what strategies we can use in the future to support that. So, I'm here today to talk about kind of the balancing of some competing goals. Historic preservation can sometimes be in competition with our ability to rehab affordably, maintain affordably our structures in the city of Dubuque. But, as you can see, some of our buildings that have come into disrepair in historic areas, can we turn them into something like this? Something like this. Still has historic preservation, but is affordable. And I have to say, yes, we can, because this is an example of one we have. So, this house specifically was completely rehabbed by the city of Dubuque, and the historic value of this house was actually restored and maintained after, obviously had already gone into complete disrepair. So it is something that we can do on the majority of structures, but there are some barriers that come with that. So, a couple of the barriers that we see are people that haven't maintained their structures, or through death or other things, have abandoned or vacated a property that has historic value. We have currently 88 vacant abandoned buildings licensed in 2021, and 23 of them were in historic areas. Two of those did get demolished. They were by the Dream Center, completely in disrepair. There wasn't a way to make those viable, and that does happen. So, in 2022, we currently have 56 vacant abandoned buildings that are licensed, and 21 remain in historic areas. So we're not making any movement on the historic buildings that are vacant, but we are making movement on the other buildings that are vacant. So, obviously, there's some barriers into getting them switched over and reused. Unfortunately, as what the maps show, a lot of our vacant abandoned buildings are in our CDBG areas. Those are our low to moderate income areas. As you can see on the map, those are orange. Our historic areas are a little deeper orange there with the lines, and historic buildings that are individually historic are labeled in blue. As you can see, these are low-income areas. We often have low-income families that are living in historic buildings, historic areas, and so the cost to get those back into use is pretty high. It has to be undertaken somehow to get those back into reuse. That is one of the barriers that we're seeing. As you can see, this information was from '21. We had 23 historic buildings that were vacant and abandoned. Two of them were demolished, whereas only one outside of the historic areas were demolished. Forty-eight of those 60 had code violations. So we're just seeing a lot of deterioration on the exterior of these buildings, which is the higher costs for these. Some of the challenges have come from the past. Fifty years ago, lack of enforcement on demolition by neglect. We have seen that in the past, these very old buildings, no one was enforcing, just go ahead and let them deteriorate. And we've seen, unfortunately, things like 1025 bluff, where it was just so in disrepair by the time we're able to step in, that it had to be demolished as opposed to saved. And so we're still fighting that barrier a little bit. Deterioration happens over time, and so we can't go back 50 years. We have to go forward, and so we have to find a way to start preservation now. And we have been for quite a few years now, so we're starting to see some of the fruits of that enforcement. Some of the other things that become barriers, obviously funding opportunities in the past were very rare. It's getting better with historic tax credits, and I have Dwayne Hagerty here to speak a little bit about historic tax credits after I'm done. But also just fires and catastrophic events. Historic buildings have older electrical, they have older systems, and they're more prone to the fires, the catastrophes, and after that catastrophe, how do you react? How do you repair major historic features of a building? And then balancing that affordability to preservation has also been a historic barrier. So challenges that we see today, more so on the enforcement side, since we have started our enforcement efforts, both on historic buildings and other structures in the city of Dubuque. But court orders, proceedings, and appeals are very slow. These buildings are examples of ones that we have been in court for over 20 years on these buildings. And as we're in court, nothing is happening, so no maintenance is being had, no repairs are happening, and as you know, over 20 years, a building just keeps getting worse, especially if it doesn't have a roof. One to two years, it suddenly is no longer even viable. So we have these buildings, they're very large, and we're just stuck in court. There's not a lot we can do on the enforcement side. So when do we step in and abate? So we have some ordinances that say you can go ahead and start repairing properties. Unfortunately, that would cost $100,000 to $200,000 just to get the exterior into some type of repair, and then how does that move it forward for the interior? Because then there's a huge lien on the property, taxpayers have to front that money and start over, so we have to make some decisions on what and when to abate, as opposed to continuing through a court process. We have some additional costs and lead times for materials. Obviously, historic windows are often wood. As we know with COVID, a lot of those wood windows now take eight months, 12 months to get in. You may need that now. So how are we balancing that? And then just qualified contractors to make sure the historic work is completed properly. So some of the successes that we've actually seen, a couple were on that first slide of challenges and barriers. At 1293 Walnut, historic building, the 1659 Iowa, and obviously, we had a catastrophic event somewhat recently on Lawrence Boulevard, which is an historic area. So historically, it blew up, and now all of those boarded windows were replaced with historic wood windows. It did take, we just removed some of our last boarded-up windows, so that was 18 months of waiting for them. However, we did get these buildings that are on that street back and kept the historic nature of those buildings that were destroyed, the windows and many other features as well. Our 1659 Iowa Street, a little hard to see there, but has been starting and under construction. The church right next door to that has also undergone a lot of construction, retaining and actually putting back in the historic value of that building that had completely deteriorated and was really no longer contributing to that neighborhood. And then 1293 Walnut, that's one that the city of Dubuque petitioned for, and it is just the back side that you see there as the original was, but it was completely, every porch was falling in, everything on the outside of that was down, and we were able to restore several of those historic features. Some of them did have to come down, so this was kind of a middle road success. The neighbors think it's an amazing success. Some of our other bigger ones that we see around town, obviously, the historic Millwork District was undertaken by the City Council. There was 94-plus million in investment through 2017, and it continues to see investment down in that area. All those buildings are historic and have now contributed several housing units, as well as retail, down to that area and brought basically people back to where they weren't in abandoned buildings. So, a big success story, but it does take a lot of investment. We also have Four Mounds Heart rehabilitations that are happening throughout the city, specifically with the city of Dubuque's programs. And then we also have the, like Bishop Block was another one, that we continually make sure we're supporting the maintenance and support on that. We have a lot of economic development happening in the areas that are historic downtown, and so that's also contributing. This was actually from Jill O'Connor's presentation for her budget. As you can see, all those blue dots, all in historic areas in the downtown, kind of bringing those buildings back up on that loan incentive program. We've also undertaken through the Planning Services Department with Wally Wernemont. We continue to survey and evaluate archaeological resources. Over 6,000 historic properties have been surveyed, several protected, $3 million in investment in that historic and downtown neighborhoods, just in the historic areas. So we're actually doing a lot of work in this area and significant investment. We also have Historic Preservation Commission, so they are overseeing any of the permits, designs, et cetera, to make sure that we are preserving as much of the historic value of structures as possible. Several cases went before them, only a few demolition review, which is actually a positive that I see in the city. We've seen less demolition of historic structures. Doesn't mean we're done with that, but we are seeing less of that as the enforcement has started to become viable option. And I also have Dwayne Hagerty here from Heritage Works, and I just wanted to have him to talk a little bit about our opportunities that we have for investment through the historic tax credits. Dwayne?
Thanks, Alexis. Thank you for having me here tonight. Just wanted to talk a little bit about Heritage Works, what we do and how we assist with economic development and revitalization in Dubuque. Heritage Works is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. We focus on activating Dubuque's historic resources to catalyze economic development and spur community revitalization and improve the lives of people in the Dubuque region. We began our work in June of 2015, so over seven years now. We are a community organization unlike any other. We focus on assisting property owners to complete historic redevelopment projects through design assistance and help with finding funding for projects, primarily through historic tax credits, other state tax credits, and grants, both government and private grants. To date, we have been involved in helping over 40 projects in various capacities. These projects represent almost $100 million in investment in redeveloping historic buildings, and that's projects that, you know, some of them have been completed, some of them are currently in the works, and some of them are planned. The projects have ranged from private residences, which a lot of people do not realize the state historic tax credit is available to private homeowners. It's not only for commercial development. The state tax credit is available for private homeowners, nonprofits, churches, and we've been working with all those types of projects. But we've also been involved in some of the larger projects, one of which is the $40 million redevelopment of the DuPaco Voices building. And one of the reasons why we started Heritage Works is because we saw that some of the larger projects that were being done were being done because those project owners had the resources to hire the experts to find the funding, to help with the design work. But it was the smaller to medium-sized projects that weren't being done because these property owners either did not know that these funding sources were available, or didn't have the financial resources to be able to hire people to do these projects. So we help property owners complete all parts of the state and federal historic tax credit applications, and we also help with tax credits such as the workforce housing tax credit, which Dave, some of which Dave talked about, and redevelopment tax credits, the Grayfield-Brownfield tax credits. To date, we have also assisted property owners to obtain over 2.5 million total in public and private grants in our seven years of operations. We're an entrepreneurial nonprofit, and we derive fee-for-service revenue through generating consulting fees for our work. All of our revenue goes into our mission as a historic preservation organization. So that involves, to date, we've done over 20 free educational presentations and architectural tours in Dubuque and outside of Dubuque, and we have been involved with state and national advocacy groups, working to retain and enhance funding sources for historic redevelopment, including the state and federal historic tax credit. And some of you know that those programs are always under attack. At the federal level, we almost lost the federal credit in 2017 with the tax reform, and I think Dubuque was instrumental in helping to retain that because of our connections with Senator Grassley and other federal representatives. And of course, the state credits also, just more recently in the last session, they cut back some of the refundability of the state historic tax credit, which is key for these small projects, because they rely on the refundability of the credit for the funding for their project. Most recently, we have started, Heritage Works has started, a tax credit investment partnership program. It's a program that's vetted and approved by the IRS that allows us to utilize our nonprofit tax-exempt status and historic preservation mission to partner with projects to help them defer federal income tax on the receipt of their state historic tax credit. And this brings millions of additional dollars to the funding of projects to help them fill gaps and complete difficult projects. It's a little bit difficult to explain in this short time period that we have. I'd be more than willing to come back and kind of give you a little step-by-step explanation of how that works. But it really, again, because of our Historic Preservation Commission, we are in a unique ability to do that. We're the only organization in the state to do it, and we're really one of the few organizations in the Midwest to do it. There's another organization in Minnesota, Historic Preservation Nonprofit in Minnesota, that has been doing some work here in Iowa with that same program, and we've been speaking to projects in Iowa that they would rather work with a state-centered nonprofit to do that sort of funding. So we really feel that this is a very tremendous growth opportunity for us, and the fees that we generate through this program will allow us to develop funding streams for small projects to help them pay for things like pre-development work and to fill small gaps in funding. So the projects that we'll work with on this to bring the funding typically are going to be larger projects, but the fees that we generate from that, we're going to set aside into some funds to help small projects, most of which will benefit projects here in Dubuque. And with that fund, we hope to leverage that to attract some more private funding to enhance those funds. Those are key for these projects, because lots of times, projects never get off the ground because they don't have the funds to do the state historic tax credit, or the federal and state historic tax credit applications, hire an architect, things like that. So we hope to help those smaller projects with those costs. So we hope to leverage this funding with additional, which I talked about with additional private donations, but the other thing is that we're going to be doing projects outside of Dubuque. So, you know, we can do projects in Des Moines, we could do projects in Cedar Rapids, Davenport. We can even do projects out of state if they have a refundable state historic tax credit. And the beauty of that is it brings those funds into Dubuque that we can use then for Dubuque projects. So we're proud of our work that we have already done and are excited about our future. We know that we have strong partners with the city, with the county, with private property owners and community organizations, where we have developed a good, strong working relationship with the city, Alexis and Wally and the Planning Department. And so we really feel like, you know, we can be an asset for the community, feel like we already have been. We don't value historic buildings solely as relics. We don't see the buildings themselves as a value in and of themselves. It's what those buildings do to improve the community and to improve the lives of those that live and work in them. So, any questions?
Well, thank you very much, Dwayne and Alexis, for the presentation. Open it up to questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Barber?
So I just want to give a shout-out to Heritage Works and your team, Dwayne. I happen to be on their board and have seen firsthand just the wonderful work that has been accomplished over the last seven years, and especially this wonderful collaborative relationship that has evolved with Alexis and her team, as well as the specialist, and I call them specialists in historic preservation, because it is an art. It is really one that takes a lot of time, energy, talent, and enthusiasm, and just heartfelt understanding of what it is to preserve these beautiful structures that we have here in Dubuque. And I have witnessed it, because I have done three myself in Cable Car Square, know what it takes to put in new beams and new roofs and new walls on the interior, and I'm just so pleased that, as we had talked about this as a priority last year, that this relationship has just really developed so well between Heritage Works, the investors, as well as the city. And I think it's a great step to preserving, as you said, what are some of the economic drivers, past and present, for the city of Dubuque. So, thank you both for working together, and with great appreciation.
Thank you, Ms. Barber.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
With all due respect to the process and our community's love of historic structures, can someone take a minute and explain the virtue of requiring, like wood windows as opposed to replicas of vinyl or aluminum or a more modern component that's going to last longer and require less maintenance and keep buildings out of disrepair? I've always been a little bothered by that, and now 18 months of delay, perhaps another material could have kept them looking good and looking like they looked and back in service.
Sure. So I'm going to ask Wally Wernemont to take that one, because he has 100% of the expertise on the historic preservation of wood windows.
And I'm not against that, I just don't understand it.
Planning Services Manager, Wally Wernemont. I was wondering if I was going to be up to swing on this one. So, the question that gets brought up, especially when we get involved with, say, federal funding, whether it's funding through the Housing Department, Community Development Block grant funding, or federal permits involved, we have to follow what they call the Secretary Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Those are federal guidelines, and we enter into what we call a Section 106 review process. So there are federal rules and regulations that we have to follow. Those projects come through our office. We conduct what we call a consultation period. That's what that Section 106 review is, and we confer back and forth with the state historic preservation office. So a lot of the information that you found up there with about surveys and researching the history of our neighborhoods, that's helping us identify what properties are National Register eligible. You don't even have to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places, that still may be required to have wood windows. But basically, it's the historical nature to keep the architectural integrity of the building. We're trying to look at a building to be rehabilitated. Ideally, we'd like to scrape and paint and repair those windows when feasible. That's the one discussion that we talked about, qualified contractors and the timeframe to get some of that might come around. Some homeowners just like to look at putting in a vinyl window. Those wood windows that are getting replaced are probably 100 years old, and if they get scraped, painted, repaired, they might last for another 100 years. It's the old growth timber that we use. A lot of times, we're looking at replacing wood windows with vinyl windows within a 20-year time period. And just one project I just want to explain is the Henry Stouts Senior Apartments. That was a historic tax credit project. There are some wood windows that were completely replaced in that building, and all those buildings' windows are actually being, the process may have to be replaced. So the longer we can hang on to those older wood windows, the better they are. But just to understand, it's really tied to the federal regulations that we go through with the Section 106 process, and then also the National Register eligibility for the property, but that's tied to the federal funding. If you're in a National Register district, not a city-designated district, homeowners can just switch out the wood windows for vinyl unless they're using federal funding. Then there's a different review process there. If you're in a city-designated historic district, which we have five, that comes underneath our historic preservation ordinance, and we're going to stick to those Secretary Interior standards. We do allow some flexibility, where we may have the main facade of the building be wood windows, maybe two-thirds of the side be wood windows, but the back of the building we may be a little bit more flexible on. And that goes through the commission and just those federal guidelines that we follow. So, I don't know if that helps answer your question at all.
Kind of slightly, thank you.
You weren't kidding about Wally being an expert on that one. Wally?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Resnick?
Yes, thank you. So, Mr. Lyons might have pointed out that sometimes, perhaps, historical preservation could be viewed as an impediment to affordable housing. And I know that what our brand here is in Dubuque, that we do history right. So I'm just asking, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Hagerty, have they been asking, has anybody asked to maybe degrade historical aspects to increase affordability? I used to live in a historic neighborhood, and it was amazing, it was expensive to keep those houses up, but it was an amazing neighborhood. And it didn't seem to really attract, I think, the money that it could, that, you know, these are fantastic places, and yet, people are buying on the West End, houses of lesser quality, really, but they're newer. And so where does that mix happen, where we can make historical preservation affordable? I guess I was asking Mr. Hagerty, but maybe you want to punt that?
Yeah, that's a good question, and, you know, there's lots of, you know, stories out there about how historic preservation causes, you know, housing to be more expensive and out of reach. But, you know, the thing, especially in a community like Dubuque, the affordable housing is all in the historic areas. And these funding sources that allow these buildings to be redeveloped so that they can be available to people in those neighborhoods helps bring the cost of the rehab of those properties down. So, the historic tax credit, for example, you have a state tax credit of 25% of qualified rehabilitation costs, and you have a federal credit of 20% of qualified rehabilitation. So between the two, you can potentially get a credit of almost half of the cost of your rehabilitation, which brings the cost of that rehab down. People, you know, it can be costly to maintain a building, and so these tax credits are meant to bring that cost down. The other funding sources that are available, such as workforce housing tax credits and Grayfield-Brownfield, that all helps to fill those gaps, to make these projects available. And, you know, the projects that we work on, we work with, for example, Chris Richard, who's a developer from Platteville, who's done projects on Central Avenue. He's done a 30 apartment project on 17th Street, and all of those are affordable. You know, they've worked with the city for the funding, and those have to be within a certain range of rents, and so it keeps the rents down so that people can afford to live in those. And the quality of those is very high from a finish standpoint. They're nice places to live in. So I think it's a misnomer that historic preservation causes a lack of affordability, because here in Dubuque, you know, all of the rehabs, most of the historic rehabs have been affordable.
Mr. Mayor, could I follow up on a question? Sure, yeah, Mike, and I see Dave chomping there, too.
So I would agree with everything that Dwayne said, but have they overcome the obstacle of monetizing the federal historic tax credits on small projects like that? Because that's the biggest complaint I get, is I don't have that kind of tax liability. How do I monetize the credit? It doesn't have any value.
Yeah, that is a big issue, and fortunately, at least since I've been here in Dubuque, there have been some investors, you know, some local investors who are more willing to invest in some of these small projects, so you're able to utilize the federal credit. One of the things that we're trying to get Congress to pass is that they increase the credit for small projects, projects that are under $2.5 million, to a 30% credit rather than 20%, which would overcome some of the costs of doing these smaller projects, and then hopefully attract investors, if they're going to get a larger credit, to attract investors into these smaller projects. So that is a difficulty, especially with the small projects. Typically, any project under $4 million would have a hard time finding a federal investor to come and take the credits. The state credit is fully refundable. It's a certificated credit, so you can sell that certificate on the market. certificate on the market, and you, there's a very robust market for the certificate, but the federal credit doesn't have the same certification, so it's harder to place those credits.
Got you.
All right. I know we're out of time. There's a few, we can send more information through the city manager to answer some of that question as well.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thanks, this was a lot of information in a half an hour, so thank you very much for everything that you were able to offer. So, there being no further business in the work session, we will stand adjourned.